Good evening, everyone. We're actually going to go ahead and start with a roll call before our introduction. Christina.
Ayesha Clark.
Here. Karen Taylor.
Here.
Kimberly Oliver.
Here.
Shana T. Brody.
Here.
Juan Fernandez.
Here.
Leslie Paguara. Phil Rigor.
Here.
Craig Stallings. We have a call. Thank you. And we do apologize for the delay. We were having some technical difficulties on our end. So, good evening. As Chairperson of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order the April 21st, 2020 regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone watching online. The boards, superintendent, and I are pleased that you have joined us in these unprecedented times. Governor Lamang has signed Executive Order 7B in which he suspended several sections of the Connecticut Freedom of Information Act in order to allow public agencies to meet remotely, so long as they meet several requirements, which we have met. As long as, per the executive order, public agencies, including boards of education, may hold meetings remotely, i.e. without public physically present, so long as we make arrangements for the public to watch the meeting in real time by video. Recognizing how important public input is, I'd like to remind you that you are able to email your public comments to csantiago@hartfordschools.org. This meeting has been posted as required by state law. We are very proud of the school system and thank you as your interest in the Hartford Public Schools. Now Superintendent will read this in Spanish.
Buenas noches. Como Presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford, por la presente llamo a orden esta reunión ordinaria. Deseo dar una calidad bienvenida a nuestra audiencia en línea, a la junta, a superintendente. Y nos complace que se haya unido a nosotros en esos tiempos sin precedentes. El gobernador Lamang ha firmado la Orden Ejecutiva 7B, en la que suspendió varias secciones de la Ley de Libertad de Información de Conérico para permitir que las agencias públicas se reúnan remotamente, siempre y cuando cumplan con varios requisitos que hemos cumplido. Como tal, y según la Orden Ejecutiva, las organizaciones públicas incluidas, las juntas de educación, pueden realizar reuniones de forma remota, es decir, sin que el público esté físicamente presente, siempre y cuando hagamos arreglos para que el público las vea en tiempo real por video. Reconociendo lo importante que es esta opinión pública, me gustaría recordarle que pueden enviar sus comentarios públicos o el correo electrónico a csantiago@hartfordschools.org. Esta reunión se ha pedido, se ha sido publicada según lo requerido por la ley estatal. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y le agradecimos por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you Superintendent. As a reminder to everyone who will be speaking on the call, please state your name and title as we are addressing on the call as a reminder. So moving along on the agenda, we will be moving on to the board reports. First on the agenda is the... Christina, if you don't mind putting it up on the screen, the agenda. Thank you. First on the agenda is the chairman's report. I will go ahead and give that. So I would like to take this opportunity to thank all the staff that have been working through the sign and all of those who have been working on the front line. I've had the opportunity to go out and support schools like HHTCA, Weaver, and Dwight-Belluzzi with distribution. And everyone was working hard to ensure that our families are getting the things that they need during this time. I was excited to be a part of the team that works hard and supports our families during this time. As it relates to CADE, I have taken part in weekly calls with members of CADE to listen into how other districts are responding to the crisis, more specifically districts of our size. There has been information with ideas on how to conduct virtual graduations, interpretations of the executive orders, and how others are handling special education and distance learning. Additionally, there has been a culmination of the Big Five, which are the five major districts. CADE is looking at the implications of COVID for the future and how they can potentially have support for us moving forward. Lastly, on my report, within the board, we need to publicly announce a potential monument for Mr. Michael Curry. Mr. Bob Raffllo from Buckley High School, Hall of Fame coordinator, brought the item to the committee and they would like a monument marker to be placed somewhere related to athletics at Buckley High School. As per board policy, the item for consideration would need to be announced publicly at a regular board meeting and allow six months for public input. And some background information as relates to Mr. Curry, he graduated from Buckley High School in 1976. He was an outstanding race student athlete who participated in football, indoor track, and outdoor track for four years at Buckley High. He was also awarded 11 varsity letters and he was voted best senior athlete in his senior year by the coaches. On November 11th, 2015, at the young age of 58, Michael Curry passed away unexpectedly in Columbus, Ohio, leading work for the Department of Public Services. So we wanted to bring that to everyone here, just as again, because per our policy, we must allow six months and have public input. That concludes the chair report. Are there any questions? Seeing none or not hearing any, I'll move on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. I do have several things that I want to report on. Since our last board meeting, we did implement the continuity of learning from the COP, which is guided by the recommendations from our very own distance learning task force, both for the elementary and secondary levels, as well as professional learning to build staff capacity. You remember last month, you approved the contract for Link Spring, which is the online platform to provide ongoing, on-demand professional learning, both for administrators and for teachers and all certified staff. And Google Classroom was adopted as our universal platform for distance learning. We have given guidance and training on appropriate use of virtual conferencing for students, for staff, and for families. Those are also shared with our families. The next level of work is building capacity in our staff to continue to implement video conferencing with our students. There's also been... We've gotten a lot of questions about grading and grading rationales. And so just today, the revised grading rationale was shared with all building leaders to get additional feedback. And then tomorrow, it will be shared with staff since, if you remember, Wednesdays are Collaboration Professional Learning Days. The goal is to share the grading rationale with our families at the end of the week. With regard to device distribution, we continue to meet the needs of our families. We had distributed about 8,200 devices at the end of last week. We since got our order of 3,500 devices and those started to... They were distributed today and will continue throughout the week. We asked families to continue to call the Welcome Center for their respective schools so that they can make an appointment. That way, they have a specific time that they can come and pick up their device and they're not out there waiting a long time. And we can also keep everyone safe. There is a cohort of students, about 500 students, whose parents have required tech-free learning, which means that we have printed those materials and are mailing those out to our students. Yes, today, we did launch the Caring and Connecting Task Force. I was joined by 34 community partners. And the purpose of the task force is to work together to identify and develop different innovative ways to support our families, not only with supporting their children through distance learning, but also to identify additional resources our families need to meet their other needs that they have, such as food insecurity, housing insecurity, all the other challenges that we have, some of our families have. So we will continue to work with the task force. The other piece of that work is in response to many of the inquiries that have come in to schools and through the Welcome Center from families about virtual trainings and capacity building opportunities for families that extend beyond just technology challenges that our families might be having. We've also implemented, starting yesterday, telehealth services so that all of our entire Department of Health Services is providing tele services to families to support them with any... Their families are also available in Spanish. We continue to find ways to meet the needs of all of our students. And so our staff continues to reach out to our special education students and 504 students to ensure that, to the best of our ability, we're able to meet the needs of our students. There was reference to, from our chair, about us joining the Big Five earlier today. And just from a superintendent's perspective, there were the other superintendents that were presenting the other urban districts and some of the challenges that they raised, of course, are shared by us as well. You know, not knowing what summer planning is going to look like, being concerned about what instruction is, could, is going to look like at the beginning of next year and what all of those pose from a financial perspective. That concludes my report.
Thank you Superintendent. All of the other reports will be available on our board docs for you all to read at your leisure. We'll now move on to our business agenda item 3.1, which is the contract approval, recommended... Contract approval of the new teacher project. The recommended action is the motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorized the superintendent to execute a contract with the new teacher project for the term delineated in the contract and the amount not to exceed $69,935, ending June 30th, 2020. Is there a motion?
Kimberly, vice chair, so moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. The motion is seconded. I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you. As we know, research does point to the fact that high-quality instructional materials matter. The new teacher project, or TNTP, published what they call, what they titled "The Opportunity Myth." And in their report, they found that the assignments that came from high-quality district adopted materials were consistently stronger than those assignments that came from lower-quality instructional materials or the ones that teachers found or had created themselves. And so given that finding, we know that since we are focused on equity and equity to us also means exposing our students on a regular basis to high-quality teaching and learning, we had to take a step in ensuring that we also were adopting, not only the instructional materials that were high-quality, but supporting teachers to use them well as a core way to gain equitable access to great appropriate assignments for our students. And then as part of the DME and our strategic plan, which is focused on high-quality materials and instructional tasks, we determined that we would partner with TNTP to engage in a curriculum audit and assessment review. So the TNTP, as part of this contract, will conduct a curriculum and assessment audit to examine not only literacy, but the numeracy instructional materials. They will produce reports that identify strengths that we might have already in terms of our curriculum and our assessments, but also the areas of opportunities for us. There is going to be use of a set of evaluation criteria that is grounded on specific evaluation tools. And they also, per our request, are going to use a culturally... What they call a culturally responsive scorecard to support us in evaluating whether our materials represent a diverse set of perspectives and experiences. The staff will also look into the overarching sequence of each course, as well as the units that are contained within our courses, and then, you know, help us with determining our strategy, specifically as a focus on equity. So I just, I want to also remind you that this is the first phase of the work, given that based on the assessment and the audit, you know, it'll inform whatever other work we can potentially do with TNTP. And something that's not part of this contract, but I did start conversations with TNTPs around a potential family and community engagement aspect of this work, given that when we talk about equity, we know that equity doesn't only live... You know, doesn't only have to be addressed in the classroom. Right? We want to take a holistic approach to equity.
Thank you so much. I also want to give the opportunity for the chair of Teaching and Learning to add anything. Board member Hernandez?
First thing, thank you. The superintendent obviously did a good job covering this. The only thing that I will add is that the committee did give this a favorable recommendation. So we did formally give the thumbs up here. I don't really have anything else to add. I think the... There were some questions afterwards, but I think they were all answered initially. So I think we're all set on this one.
Thank you so much. Are there any other questions or debates? I'm taking the time just to make sure no one has their thumbs up that we can't see. Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions or anything in the chat box. So the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by stating aye. Are there any... Abstentions? Seeing none, the motion carries. Moving on to agenda item 3.2, the acceptance of funds, Title IV. The recommended action is that the motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes superintendent to accept Title IV funds in the amount of $791,719. Is there a motion?
Karen Taylor, vice chair, so moved.
Is there a second?
Kimberly. Here, second.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the superintendent.
Yes, and so part of... The majority of these funds will support the implementation of the contract as upcoming after in the agenda as it relates to improving our data and capacity use in order to create performance metrics and measurements and protocols for the entire district.
Thank you Superintendent. I'm going to turn it over to the chair of the finance, if there's anything she would like to add.
Nothing really additional to add. We did review this in committee and talked it through. As the superintendent mentioned, they will be... The plan is to use some of these funds for the contract that we'll speak to in a moment. So we agreed to move forward to the regular meeting for full committee or full board review. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Are there any other questions in our debate on agenda item 3.2? Okay, scrolling through, not seeing any hands up or anything in the chat box. The motion has been made and properly seconded. All those in favor signify by stating aye. Make sure they take it off of you. Are there any nays? Abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries, the ayes have it. Moving on to agenda item 3.3, contract approval for Decision Ed Group Incorporated. The recommended action is that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Decision Ed Group Incorporated for the term delineated in the contract and an amount not to exceed $290,800, ending June 30th, 2021. Is there a motion?
Karen, vice chair, so moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. I'm going to now turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you. Just for background, Decision Ed is a K-12 performance management system for both district and school-level use with an industry-leading data model. Information from systems across the district will be integrated into a simple repository for ease in reporting and dashboard views. There are pre-ghost dashboards and reports that provide immediate value with delivery of information on prime, real-life information and data reports for a variety of stakeholders. You know, we're excited to be able to get into this level of work, given the many advantages that we have. One streamlined of data system. It really allows us to manage student data and we will also be able to easily access other data that are aligned to our DME goals and priorities. In addition to pre-populated reports, dashboards, we will work with Decision Ed to customize specific dashboards to our needs. Right? As I think about the different data sets that we look at for, for example, a community school, a magnet school, how to customize the reports and have them be accessible at a quickly and user-friendly way. The other pieces that we are transitioning to is what we call a school quality review process. And so, you know, as we're building that out, it does require us to also have a dashboard for us to monitor progress at the school level and at the district level. It is also a time-saving tool that will allow us to make better informed decisions based not only on the easily accessible data, but the digit... You know, it's digestible as well. We mentioned that the contract is funded by, you know, the Title IV Part A for $290,000. And this aligns not only to DME goals, but there's also work that we did to get better at our own performance management. And so this is a tool that's also going to help with internal processes, protocols, and functions.
Thank you Superintendent. I also want to turn it over to the finance... The chair of the finance committee, if she would like to add any additional information.
Again, nothing additional to add. However, I would like to say that this did come to committee to confirm that and also that we did review and have that conversation. We felt comfortable and trust a source of funds, as we mentioned earlier, for the now-approved acceptance of the Title IV funds. And with that, we agreed that we should move forward for consideration at tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions? You move to be on agenda item 3.3, the Decision Ed Group Incorporated. Not seeing any hand raise or any comments within the comment in the chat room. The motion has been made and properly seconded. All those in favor signify by stating aye. Are there any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion has been approved. Do... Moving on to the consent agenda, do I have a motion to take the consent agenda up as one item?
Kimberly, vice chair, so moved.
Is there a second?
Thank you, Phil, go on, remember.
Thank you, Phil. Are there any questions in the debates? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Are there any nays? Abstentions? Seeing none, I... The motion is approved. Do I have a motion to vote on a consent agenda? Karen Taylor, vice chair, so moved. Is there a second?
I'm here, second.
Thank you. Are there any questions in the debates? Not seeing one, hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Are there any nays? Abstentions? Hearing none, the ayes have it, the motion is approved. I think we're all the way down to the closing. Is there a motion for a German? Karen Taylor, vice chair, so moved. Is there a second?
Sergeant Phil, remember.
Are there any questions in our debates? I'm sure there are no debates about ending. Not seeing any... All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Any nays? Abstentions? Ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you everyone. We will have a wonderful evening and we will be in touch soon. Thank you.
I'm going to one.
Take care of yourselves.